Good afternoon and welcome to the Duluth Public Schools Monthly Committee of the Whole Meeting. It is Tuesday, December 5th, and it is 4:35. And again, this is a monthly meeting held with full board members here, and the intent is to spend an evening listening and learning and presenting some of the best things going on in our district, things that are being addressed, and you know, projects that we're working on, next steps in lots of different things, and tonight is no different. So I welcome all of our guests, our presenters, and of course, our community that will load this up with anticipation tomorrow and watch our YouTube version of this. So, welcome. And I'll turn it to Clerk Zdowski, who will take role. Member Edar.
Here.
Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Lafferty.
Here.
Member Lofol.
Here.
Member Oswald.
Here.
I am here and member Sandal.
Present.
Perfect. And Superintendent Vegas.
Here.
And Assistant Superintendent Banzos, I knew you were here.
Present.
Perfect. And Board Secretary Pickett.
Here.
Did I miss anyone?
I think that's good. So, at our Committee of the Whole Meeting, the agenda is determined a lot by all the things going on in our school district, and between the leadership and Board Chair and Assistant Superintendent Banzos, we come up with these great things that we will hear about tonight. So I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Banzos. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chair, and good evening, everyone, and good evening, community. Those of you who will be watching the video at some point in time, I want to start off with some quick introductions to the team here. The first presentation that we will be covering today will be, it's listed as number two, "The World's Best Workforce." So we're gonna start off the presentation with "The World's Best Workforce", and the team here is gonna explain what is "The World's Best Workforce" and all of the efforts the district is undertaking to ensure students are achieving and improving and getting our students across the stage. And so I'm gonna start off with introductions with Brenda Sparks, who is our Director of Elementary. She can introduce herself, and then we'll let others.
Thank you, Anthony, for introducing me. So yes, I am Brenda Sparks. I'm the Director of Elementary Education.
Laura Thurston, Assistant Director of Special Education.
Jen Larkin, Director of Secondary Education.
Tonya Lake, Director of Assessment and Evaluation.
Deel Usmen, Curriculum Coordinator.
Heidi Schefman, District Assessment Coordinator and Interventionist.
We're gonna get right into the presentation because it's a lot of information, and I want the board to have the chance to understand everything we're doing to, again, improve outcomes for students. I'm gonna turn it over to Director Sparks.
Yes, well, thank you for having us. This is, as you know, our annual stakeholder meeting for "The World's Best Workforce", which checks off a box for one of the requirements of the legislation. And so tonight, you're gonna be hearing about the district's efforts surrounding the five goals of "The World's Best Workforce", those goals, the progress, and the strategies that the district has surrounding those goals. And so that's what we'll be doing tonight as a part of that.
And if the board doesn't mind, I might move over here, Member Derek Edar, so that I can see better.
What if I might?
I do.
Yep, and note too, that it seems really formal. You know, we're on this side, you're on that side. It's kinda not how, you know, always best practice is told for us to do. So just know that this is really pretty informal, really, it is. And I have M&amp;M's over on the side that you can get afterwards or in between, or...
We can throw them to you for good reason.
Hey, we love it!
Remember Oswald's computer needs to be turned, so she can see that.
Can you see them? Member Oswald?
No.
So let's...
She needs to see the board, or...
So, which computers is logged in, right?
I don't know if it's Patty's or the computer anyway, or the TV, because it only goes up bright white.
So maybe if Patty joins the meeting and then displays her screen, would that work?
I think that's going to...
Well, we want, we wanna see that.
Oh, I see. Yeah, we need the presentation.
But I just think, and remember, Oswald, see our presenters.
Maybe if we, since it's in Board Book, if people let people know what slide number we're on?
That works. Okay. So, you'll see the agenda. Tonight, you're gonna hear from a variety of us. We just introduced, we're all a part of TLE. And so we all play some role in these five goals. And so we'll be sharing, we'll be taking turns sharing tonight. We'll give you a brief, very brief overview of "The World's Best Workforce", some of the goals and strategies.
Patty must be interfering with the...
I tried to...
I think that means that you're...
No, it's good now. I had to...
Thanks, Patty. We'll be covering goals and the progress made towards goals and the strategies surrounding the five goals. And then, we did get some additional feedback through our journey that we had this fall, so there's some information about that, and then some future considerations and next steps at the end. You'll see the 10 Minnesota Commitments to Equity. We have these in many of our presentations for you. I know when you go to the state, you see them embedded in presentations. What you should see tonight is our "World's Best Workforce" and the work embedded in here, reflected in these commitments to equity. So we just make sure that we post these in most of our presentations now and keep them in front of people. So the overview, so what is "The World's Best Workforce"? I think this has probably, for the last 10 years, come in front of the board. The legislation passed in 2013. What, I'm just gonna have him with this slide for you. Oh, so sorry.
Chan, distracting me.
I didn't want to. So, believably, I mean unbelievably, it's 10 years old now. I remember when it first got enacted, and oh, boy, that was quite a change for the whole state. But what it's meant to do is provide consistency across our Minnesota districts in our approach to measuring, monitoring, and reporting progress surrounding five common goals. So every single district has to do the same exact template, if you will, with the same kind of criteria within their "World's Best Workforce". These are all locally developed plans and implemented locally. A district has to do two different reports. One is the annual report, which is what you're gonna be hearing about tonight, and that's about what's happening now. And one's a summary report, which is what Tanya reports to the state every December. And that's a reflection on how we did last year. So there's two parts to "The World's Best Workforce". And then, so we create this, we implement it, we monitor it, and then we report it out at an annual meeting, which is what we're doing tonight.
I believe... Is that Alana's hand went up?
Yep, she's raising her hand.
Go ahead, Alana.
I just had a question about that, the second paragraph, it said something of, "School boards are required to develop the plan." How does our school board develop the plan? Because it just seems to me like we received the plan that's already been worked on.
Right, I think that's one of those instances where you have us develop it on your behalf. And so I think that's what we do, and then we report out. And so that's usually what happens in districts.
And so, when the public reads that, and I know I have been asked this directly by people and members of the public, that, you know, we're supposed to develop it, and that where is our responsibility in the development of it? So they hold us accountable for this plan, even though we didn't have a lot of say in what it contains. So how do we bridge that gap of us being able to meaningfully contribute to the development?
You ask a very good question, and I think what happens with this plan is that you give the responsibility over to the school district to develop it. We actually go through quite an extensive process of involving stakeholders in the process, too. I know some of the board members were involved in that process. And so they were there and present. It took a lot of people sitting down and reflecting upon this. And so, you know, it's actually a whole process, and Tanya's gonna actually go over that next, of how we come up with this plan. And so we do that on your behalf.
Go ahead. I would also say that there's, sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say that there's significant alignment between our district's strategic plan, which was deeply developed by the students, families, and staff of the district, as well as in partnership with the board. So there are various aspects that are aligned, but... I mean, probably more to say. Go ahead.
I might also think about this from the board perspective, because we talk about the board being a governance structure, and I feel like if we got too involved in the development of this plan, that would be into the management piece of district business. So along with the way that I've, the lens that I'm using it is that the district comes up as they're the closest to the students and the closest to what we need to accomplish. They pull it up together and do present that plan to us. And as part of our governance structure, then it is our job to approve it and then be responsible for it in that governance piece, which would be budget, would be policy, and then also would be how we supervise and evaluate the superintendent. That's a little bit how I would think about it. That's a good question, Alana, but I would bring it back to our role in the governance structure as opposed to management.
And I'd like to respond to that, because I fully recognize the governance structure, but yet, the definition that was just provided to us says directly that the school board develops it.
Within our...
Exactly, you know, I'm just having this conversation so the public is aware of how this develops and happens, and how the school board needs to take responsibility for it, but yet, you know, we're not intricately involved, even though the law says that we must develop it. It's very confusing and murky, especially for people that are on the outside looking in and want to hold us accountable.
Is this statement a statement taken from the law, or is it a statement you developed?
It's actually directly taken from, I read it today, it's on the website. So it isn't directly from...
On our website, or MDEs?
MDE's website. It's actually like the second sentence or paragraph on the website.
And I would also say that through, basically, school districts are only required to have one position by law, and that's the role of superintendent. And I play the role of de facto school board member, but also as an entity, so working with the district. So through me, through my designees, it's been developed. But I do think that Alana brings up a good point, that we need to make sure that through that governance role of, that you mentioned, Member Derek Edar, that we need to make sure that we, you're holding us accountable for the results, and you're also approving the budget that gives us the resources to deliver or not deliver. And those, and the policies that need to align to make sure things can move forward solidly. So you do play a very important role in the execution of this. And also, if it's not delivered upon, then I think that I need to be held accountable, and likewise, my team and their teams need to be held accountable, too, in a supportive way.
Member Lafferty.
Yeah, you know, when I was reviewing it and thinking of the past 10 years that we've been doing, that these updates to the board, but then reviewing strategies and things like that, you know, I made pause that, oh, yeah, we heard about that in the July meeting, or we heard about that in, you know, past meetings. So I kinda reflected on where some of the work that was put into this, as well as some of the goal setting, you know, where we've gotten numerous updates on. But certainly, maybe there is a step in there that is one more update before presenting it to the community group that you had. And that, again, was just one of my questions on who was a part of that and how was that developed? And that can maybe be answered later on throughout the presentation. But in my reflection, I, you know, those are some of my thoughts on how we have provided input, kinda, when we've gotten different updates in our Committee of the Whole Meetings.
Thank you for that, and we have strived to honor the written and spirit of the legislation. And I think even this year, in a more meaningful way, we've really taken a couple of steps further as a district to ensure that all of our departments are involved in the development of the plan, to ensure that what is written is actually what is executed in the buildings and in sites. Again, Tanya will go through in a few minutes the process that was followed, because again, the spirit and requirement is that there's an advisory team. And so there was an advisory team that was developed and met and helped develop, the, helped provide guidance on the plan that is being presented today. And there's always the opportunity for the board, as you're on, to make any additions or further recommendations or tweaks to the plan. We are open to those ideas and suggestions, and this is one of those moments where we are providing that opportunity for input. So if we can move forward just a little bit, because I know Tanya is going to share the process that we did follow, and then if there's more questions, and if there's recommendations that the board has at the end, we will take those into consideration and make those adjustments.
Thanks.
Dr. Lake.
All right. So this year, Assistant Superintendent Banzos assigned a "virgenda", we sometimes call ourselves, Brenda, Jen, and Tanya, to pull together this process. So we pulled together a team and, you know, outlined what would a plan look like so that we are really following statute, both the, within the law, the letter of the law, and the spirit of the law. And one of the things that we felt really strongly about was building a representative advisory committee. So where we started was, we first, just as a smaller team, we reviewed last year's goals and strategies and the results. And then we put together a draft plan that we would bring to an advisory committee. And we were very intentional about building that advisory committee, making sure that it was mostly comprised of parents, guardians, and the community, though we did have some staff. And it was really nice, we also had students there this year. We also had some current and incoming school board members that attended, which was nice as well. We looked to our existing advisory committees, like our EAC Committee, our Education Equity Advisory Committee, our Parent Advisory Council on Special Education, Early Childhood Family Education Advisory, and then our Head Start Parent Policy Council. Those were some of the committees that we reached out to. We also reached out to American Indian Parents Education Group. But yeah, we really leaned on our advisory groups that we currently have, got representation from there. We also got representation from each of our schools. So we had a little over 60 people attend the event. And what we did is we held this event at the Technology Village. We had a late meal, we presented our last year's goals, our strategies that we were proposing, and then we broke up into small groups, and we had those who attended follow through each of the groups and provide feedback on the strategies that we had, that we were bringing forward as a draft. And then, after we gathered that feedback, we reconvened as a team. We reviewed all of that feedback that we got, and then we incorporated what we could into the current plan. So you'll notice that as we go through the strategies tonight, the things that have an asterisk next to them, there are things that were either added or modified as a result of feedback from the advisory committee. And then at the end, we had some additional considerations that we just wanted to bring forward that the committee had shared.
Member Zdowski.
Thanks. I would just say thank you for putting that event on. I got to attend most of it anyway, and it was a really good opportunity for people to give feedback. I really liked that you broke it into small groups and let people kinda move around, so it was interactive. I heard a lot of really good questions, good feedback. So I appreciate you putting that in here with the asterisks, too.
Yeah, it was very helpful for us to build in our plan. I think we have a more, I think we have a more solid plan as a result of that feedback from the community. Like I said, we have some additional recommendations that came through that we'll be sharing at the end of the presentation. So what I'm gonna do next is I'll be sharing a goal, what our goal was, what our results were, and then you'll hear from other committee members on what our strategies are, moving forward for addressing them. So the first area within "The World's Best Workforce" is kindergarten readiness. And this is a goal that, it's a new goal for us. It's a new measure that we're moving forward. Previously, we had used just pre-literacy type skills as our marker, because that was something that all of our kindergarten students, it's an assessment that they take at the beginning of the year, but none of us really felt good about that as being a kindergarten readiness goal. It really doesn't encompass the whole child. Where now, we're able to look at, we have an estimate called a desired results developmental profile. We look at seven domains of approaches to learning, social, emotional, language and literacy, cognition, physical. So you can see, it's a more holistic view of our kindergarten students. Our goal is that the students who participate in our preschool programs in our school district, that 85% of them will score within the end of the year before kindergarten range on four of those five domains. So our preschool programs are very intentionally working on those specific skill areas. And like I said, we want to have 85% of our four-year-old children to be at the end of the year before kindergarten range on math assessment. And you can see from the graphic how each of our student groups fared on that particular assessment. And we, our students did meet, when we look at all groups together, the all-students group, but also our American Indian students, our Asian students, our white students, our English learners, and our students who qualify for free or reduced price meals.
So we were gonna have, Sherri Williams was gonna join us to share this part of it, but she wasn't able to be here, and Jen Jaros. So guess what? I am going to share this with you. So what you're gonna notice about this part and all five of these areas is the categories are aligned to our strategic plan. So supporting every student, advancing equity, and then improving systems.
And just for, Member Oswald, another online learner, we're on slide nine. Sorry.
That's okay. And like Tanya was sharing with the goal, these are all the efforts prior to kids entering kindergarten. So what do we do on behalf of young learners to get them ready for kindergarten? So delivering content through developmentally appropriate practice, which is really important, and something we're now embracing into kindergarten. Fully implementing the pyramid model. The pyramid model, if you don't know what that is, it's a very, it's aligned with PBIS for the youngest learners. Again, that pyramid model goes, I think it can go through third grade. So we're going to look at more, putting that, some of those pieces into kindergarten, too. So aligning kindergarten pre-K, just on a side note. Providing individualized coaching for preschool teachers, which is a part of their own process in evaluating observing teachers. Other information and support to parents that assist them in parenting young children. You'll see the asterisk there. So that's something that did come loud and clear from our advisory committee. Actually, probably most of our goal areas that came through. Offering home visits as a way to build connections. We have a whole team of ECSE teachers, so those early childhood special education, and that's birth through when kids go to kindergarten. They are in the daycare programs, in the homes. They're incorporated into many places into our community that aren't necessarily our own programming, and they go out and support kids there. So it's pretty impressive what they are able to accomplish. I forget how many daycare centers and places, like 440, okay. I was gonna say 444, so I was off the rule, but...
And do you know how many teachers we have in serving in those kinds of needs?
I have that number, I just don't have it. Correct. It's a team, it's a team, a big team. And then continuing to provide that high-quality ECSE, so the early childhood, that family engagement and education piece in schools and at sites across the district, and adding more mental health support for preschool level. Again, that's an asterisk piece that came from our advisory committee. Next slide shows advancing equity, so prioritize serving the most vulnerable populations. So like, again, they go out into the community into so many spaces to serve our kids before they come to kindergarten. So they try to find them wherever they are. And then improving system, building those relationships with parents, families, and partnerships in the community, including Family Voice. They have a very active parent advisory board for ECSE in preschool. And then reviving the P3, that's Birth Through Grade Three Committee, which I think through COVID dwindled out, and so we're trying to bring that back.
In terms of third-grade literacy, our goal is, long-term, by 24, 25, 62% of our third-grade students will be proficient in reading as measured by our annual state assessments. And that no student group will have a proficiency rate lower than 57%. In that table, you'll see what each of the targets are for each of our student groups to meet that goal by 24, 25. Those were our annual targets. And then the graphic itself shows the actual results for each of our student groups. And in terms of third-grade literacy, our American Indian students met their annual target with 40% proficient. Their annual target was 34.4%.
When you say, are we testing then all third graders? Like, just like kindergarten, we tested all, our pre-K? Did we test all of our students that are in our early, early forward programs?
Yeah.
For that, for that first graph, and for this one, then all third graders?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is the percent of those student groups meeting the literacy standard, right?
Yeah, matched our standards on our statewide accountability.
And so we certainly have very, very, very significant work to do, particularly with our Black or African-American students. And I'm not trying to push that, or I mean, I think we all embrace that. We all talk about it frequently. I know, speaking with Director Larva, we talked about how early literacy needs to be the work of elementary. And I also know that sometimes there's frustration about us pushing too hard and pushing the system too hard. But when we have 6% proficiency of our Black students in third-grade literacy, and that is one of the precursors to success for the rest of their academic career, their own lives, I think that we need to continue to do everything possible.
That's a good question. Director Larva, you, I didn't quite catch the info that you said that American Indian students, they met their goals. Is that the goal that we had on the, what's the other?
Concurrent, non-concurrents.
Concurrent, non-concurrents. Is that the, is that the level that we set in concurrents, non-concurrents?
That's the goal that we have on there.
I'm just trying to throw...
I think we do have that.
Yeah, it should be. I believe that our coordinator modeled the concurrents, non-concurrents report against "The World's Best Workforce", used that kind of as the guide for the areas. If I remember correctly, she did use, transferred the targets.
Okay, that's, all right, thank you.
Yeah, we wouldn't have had the results yet at that time when we brought forward the concurrents, non-concurrents report, but you would have seen the goals, and it should match, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
With respect to Superintendent Vegas' comments, I mean, you know, there's certainly other student groups that are performing very low, too. It's just concerning, I mean, how did we get here? And then how are we gonna move forward? You know, it's just, I look at the two, and I sometimes wonder if our goals are even set too low, you know? And if you, if we go back a couple of slides, starting with some of the strategies that we're going to implement, so start off with the strategies. So that's why we're communicating, here are the things that we are striving to do and will work hard to do this year to improve those outcomes. So we start off with supporting every student by making sure that teachers are really providing individualized coaching for those preschool teachers so that they are well-informed and have the skills to meet the needs of kids, making sure that they have the personal development that they need. Make sure that we connect with families through those visits, and make sure that the families in the community, especially marginalized communities, are aware of opportunities for early learning, right? And trying to get them enrolled into our preschool opportunities. So these are all the efforts that are, some of these are, yes, very similar to things that have happened in the past, but you, please know that there's a concentrated effort to even go further, to make sure that we are connecting those... to make sure that we are connecting those families, find out what families need. I'm connected to strategies related to family and community engagement. Make sure that families, again, are aware of all of the opportunities that exist for our earliest learners. And we believe some of our families just may not be aware of it, may not be aware of those opportunities, or there might be things that are preventing them from taking advantage of those early opportunities, you know, in preschool. And we're trying to figure out what, what are those things? And how can we make sure that we get them involved and get them signed up and to take advantage? So the team is doubling down on some of the efforts and being real strategic in getting to communities, especially in the areas where families, Black, Brown, have not taken advantage of those opportunities, so that they can take advantage of them. So we're starting it early. I don't know who was first.
Well, just a follow-up, and so maybe this is for Dr. Lake too. What's more expected than, I mean, statewide, I don't know if it's stick with Minnesota, you know? I mean, for all of our students, you know? It, it even seems like forty-eight percent of all students is, is kind of concerning. And, or, or maybe it's just natural reading, learning. So is there a number that exists out there for, you know, how this, how, how the state of Minnesota is doing with teaching all students?
Yeah, at the, end of the presentation, I've included the world's best workforce data table. So not only we have the results for just last year. If you go, if you click into that, you're going to see our historical data for the last four years in comparison also to the state. So if you're looking at grade three specifically, we're, we are far lower than the state. Last year, Black students across the state, twenty-seven point one percent were proficient in reading in third grade. Still not a number that any of us would be proud of, but it is better than what we're doing in the Dull Public Schools.
And I just wanna add, because I really like your question, and I just wanna add that we started the journey to, I was gonna say transform, but to adjust our elementary. When we started the elementary schedule process, we revamped the whole schedule to better serve students. And so we just started that implementation of that schedule this fall with that embedded win, with those clearly defined course of what all students receive in literacy and protecting that so kids aren't pulled from that literacy block. And so there's so much we've done through that schedule and our structure and how we're addressing the needs of kids. I'm pretty excited about all of that. And so that, that was the beginning of our journey of looking at like, how are we doing? Can we do better? And what do we need to do and how do we get there? So that was the beginning, and then all of the curricular adjustments, when we sat through that read act stuff, and we, all those things that, when I was like, oh, we're doing that, we're doing that, doing that, I can almost go through and check it out. So anyway, for me, it's really exciting where we are and what we're doing. But Dale is gonna cover the strategies for third grade literacy. And I think in that you'll see a lot of stuff going on for us.
And before we go there, member Sanowski, go ahead.
Yeah, my question kind of relates, relates back to a question member Eider had and then member Saint Home about the American Indian rates. So we think that we met the goal there in that area. But it was still, you know, as member Saint Home pointed out, kind of a fairly low or smaller goal. But what you were talking about, about the elementary schedule, so knowing that, knowing that they made that goal, knowing that we've made all these changes, do we know what we're gonna set the next goal to? Or not?
Yeah, our targets are incremental, so that by twenty-four, twenty-five, our all students groups goal will be sixty-two percent. And no student group lower than fifty-seven. Yeah, yeah, it's just staged out mentally. But yeah, it all kind of connects, so.
And we presented on the kindergarten task force earlier this year.
That's a part of everything else we're doing, so I can come first.
And before, member Larkford came back, member Saint Home, also the state is really concerned. That's why they've changed Read Well by Third Grade to Read Well at all grade levels. So they are expecting all students at every grade level to be at grade level, regardless of the grade that they're in. So, you know, they're making significant efforts and expectations. And we are adjusting, like Director Sparts and others have shared, we're making efforts to change as well. And it's, it's gonna take time, but we're gonna continue to keep pressing with professional development with early interventions of students, early identification of students, getting students those added supports. Connected to the referendum was holding on to those intervention positions in reading and math, right? So that's why we're chasing additional resources to ensure we have some personnel who are available to provide added support or additional learning opportunities for those kids who need it the most through our intervention process. So we're striving for things and we're implementing things that you only can see in here as our core strategies, because we're just working and doing, trying to make sure we get these things done. Member Larkford came back.
I guess a couple of comments. One is I, I was glad to see a connection with the public libraries. And I know that they are doing many, many community-based efforts around literacy as well with, for families. Are we using the intervention strategy of the Minnesota Reading Corps that we, we used to use for pre-K through third grade? Do we have Reading Corps members?
Yes. I want to speak to that quick.
I just didn't see that specifically here, not that it needed to be, because it's one of many interventions I know we're doing. But we, we are using them?
Yes.
Sites are using that, yeah.
I'm not sure, member Sanal was your last, did you have another question?
Just on, kind of, this topic too, I mean, do we have, outside of staff and personnel, do we have books in our media centers that, that kids wanna read or, you know, that, that are engaging or that grab kids? And I've subbed in some of the media centers across the district, I didn't want to say that, but I go there. But, but, you know, I, I know that some are better equipped or better, you know, set up.
I think, I think if you've got a case of the strategies.
Yeah, because that's even addressed in the strategy, so we're just kind of like, it's in here.
Old, old address, yeah, that's actually on the next, the next slide.
Yeah.
So, in, to address many of the concerns that, that we're raising, there has been a major focus this year on literacy in elementary schools. Director Sparts has really been the, the driving factor in that, she's, she's making great things happen. And so under her direction, you'll see that there's a lot of things that we're, Heidi and I are about to mention, that we're doing. We're really making a shift in the district to what research is telling us is best practice, as opposed to previously what we thought was best practice. And that's not just within our district, but that's, that's a nationwide shift that we're seeing in education. So the first one is that we're really taking our professional development time this year to work with our elementary teachers on what those best practices are and what resources we can use in the classroom to support that teaching and reading.
And then related to that, helping teachers to use data to establish small group instruction to provide additional reading support to all students, which includes students who are reading on grade levels, students who are reading below grade level, and students who need acceleration.
We're making sure that the tools that we're implementing within instruction, within both intervention and whole class reading are really what research is telling us we should be using.
In addition, working with our academic reading interventionists to provide ongoing training and support through how we measure student progress. We know that using data is one of the things that's going to get all groups of our students what they need. And using data to immediately, and using data to make changes in interventions is really important. And so progress monitoring is something we're working on.
This year, we've also introduced early reading skills using evidence-based instruction. We have adopted UFLINE, which is mainly a resource for teaching phonics to students. We've increased phonics instruction, that's what the science of reading is telling us that we should be doing and maybe weren't doing the best job of before. So we actually, just yesterday, got more training to our primary teachers on how to make sure that that's being implemented well. And we also got some more training for teachers yesterday on phonemic awareness instruction, which is kind of that precursor to phonics instruction. So lots of great training is happening for teachers in what evidence, evidence-based instruction should look like.
Can I, can I just jump in? Can I ask a question here, prob, just, I don't think I want an answer necessarily, but I, because I know you probably are thinking about it, but as a classroom teacher, and we're looking at all of the strategies, the best strategies, you know, my mind kind of jumps to a little bit of class size and how I know some of our schools across the district have high numbers when you're asking for these kinds of work being done. And so I, I wonder if you, if there is a partnership between, you know, counselors or principals in the elementary and how we place our youngest learners in their classrooms with their teachers? And I don't, you know, it just seems like, you know, is, are you, I, I would, you have to consciously understand how many twenty-seven kid class that, if they're, if they're all somewhat at grade level, but then you don't wanna, you don't wanna divide that, those classes, you want them homogeneously. And you want them to encourage and be a part of every level of reading. But I don't think I want you to go deep into this, I really don't. I just think that that is such a challenge as we face, you know, the work.
I think it's important for us to consider class size, particularly at the earliest grade levels. I think front voting that is very important. And I, I know it's controversial, but the research says that, that class size is not the main determinant. If you look at Hattie's major meta-analysis work that they've done, they've, they've shown that class size is, is not as important as teacher efficacy, believing in their students, as using proper methodologies, other things. Class size is important, but it's less important than other things. And I think that sometimes we have so many conversations around class size, I think that there's some danger that if we, if we put all of our financial resources just in reducing class size and we don't put it into interventionists or, or, you know, professional learning time or the resources we need, that that could be counterproductive. However, again, you know, if you're working, if you're working with a class of thirty as opposed to sixteen, it does make a difference. So, so there is, there is effect, but it's not the only thing that has effect.
And I do have to add, in our most challenged schools, those sites have lower class sizes because of the additional resources we receive in Title I funding and COMPED funding and the data supports that those schools receive those resources and they have smaller class sizes. So those sites won't have twenty-seven or thirty students in them.
And I'm just gonna say, we added, I just am so thankful for the district, and Simone is very, she's, she helps a lot. She's, she's very concerned about especially the primary class sizes. And we put a lot of resources, even this year, into reducing class sizes in the elementary schools. And so many of our schools, including just recently, we added a kindergarten in Compton because of increased enrollment, which is great, right? But, so I just, we have been responding and fixing them as we go. So we have pretty good class sizes in the primary grades.
Member Sanal, I think I know the answer to this question, but I guess I just wanted to put, do, do we have a new reading interventionist at all grade levels?
And Heidi is, she's gonna answer that.
Kindergarten through eighth grade.
Is there a need to do it beyond? I think so.
Yeah, one of the assumptions that the new READ Act, instead of Read Well by Third Grade, they haven't, they haven't come out with yet, but the assumption is that we will need to start providing some reading intervention support at the high school level, in the interest of helping our students read.
So currently K through eight, a reading interventionist might be working with like one to five students at a time? Is that correct?
Sure, yep, it depends on the grade level and it depends on the, how many interventionists are in each building. And it depends, all the things, the size of the class, the needs of the student. But typically, reading interventionists will work with anywhere from one to six students at a time, from anywhere from ten minutes of a session for maybe students in kindergarten, thirty to forty minutes for older students. I mean, and I would say the caseloads of interventionists typically are thirty to thirty-five students in a given day.
So some of those students might get it two, three days a week?
That's, it's possible, since it is dependent on need and really data-driven. So the highest, the students that are at the highest risk should be receiving the highest number of extra minutes. And students with less risk, or maybe at higher grade levels where there's more kind of integration with, between intervention, what's happening in the classroom, because the goal is to get our students back in the classroom and accessing that grade level content as much as possible.
Thank you.
Member Larkford, again.
Just a, a follow-up, so, so, and maybe I missed it again. Did you say in our pre-K or K through eighth grade, we have reading interventionists at every school?
Yes.
And one, two?
Uh, it depends, most, most elementary schools, I believe we have at least two. And in addition, and we also have Reading Corps at most of those sites as well, with Reading Corps tutors. And the reading interventionists work very closely with the Reading Corps tutors.
Thank you.
And last thing on this, I know we keep saying last thing, but I wanna say, member Sanal, in terms of resources in the library, oh, Dale, go for it. Go for it, go for it. I just realized that, go for it.
Well, going back, there's a couple more things on the last slide that we wanted to cover, one of which we were basically just talking about, and that is identifying students in our early grades who are at risk of not reading at grade level by the end of second grade. And if we think back to the Ten Commitments to Equity, starting early, and early identification of our students' need is super important. And so not only using our benchmark screening data to identify which students are at the highest risk and the most need in the area of literacy, and then intervening early, like we were just talking about. You want me to do that one too?
My question.
Sure, that's for sure.
Um, and then the last one there is just communicating with parents and guardians about the literacy development of their children that's happening. I, I think someone already mentioned earlier that, that was a major piece of feedback that we got from the community during the advisory session, was that they'd like to see that increase. So I think we'll talk about that later on as well. The next one, under the direction of Assistant Superintendent Barnes and through his support, I know he's excited for me to mention this one. We were able to get diverse classroom libraries into our classrooms as well as into our media centers. There was a team of people who worked a lot on reviewing a lot of books. We worked with a company out of the Twin Cities to help us with that. We were able to put classroom libraries into classrooms and in our media centers that were more representative of our diverse population in Duluth and were more engaging for students. The company specifically specializes in putting together these types of collections that are engaging for students, but also really representative of diverse populations and include diverse authors' voices. So what was great about our event at the Tech Village was we were in a classroom, we were talking about this, that had all of these books around. And that was a great piece of feedback from the community, was it was, it was great to see those types of books in the classroom and, and have books that were available for students that were representative of them.
Dale, what was the name of that organization?
Um, Custom Education Solutions is, is the group that we worked with in the cities, yeah.
And I would be remiss not to mention that the only reason we were able to do this is with the use of our S R dollars. So as a district, we're gonna have to continue to find additional resources to continue to replenish our inventories in the library as well as in the classroom. So I just wanna, again, thank the community for supporting the referendum and other efforts that the district is exploring. And so thank you, because we need those resources to do this kind of work. Dale?
Yep, and then the next one is that we are continuing our work with the public library to offer a port card to students, which provides them with access to the public library resources that then those teachers can help those students access and utilize in class.
And as a member of the Library Foundation, Duluth Library Foundation Board, they, there was a round of applause when we, when it was shared that we're able to make that port card data work. So thanks to the team for sorting that out.
The last part of our literacy plan is the idea of improving systems. And what that means is systematizing the way that we use and look at and make decisions around data in all of our schools. And so that we are making decisions in the same way in different buildings at different grade levels in order to make sure that we're ensuring equity, the needs of all of our students.
How do teachers get access to the data that we're, that you take? Is that easily accessible off of their devices and in their classrooms?
That's a great question. All of, most of the literacy data that's most helpful for teachers and that teachers use comes, comes out of FastBridge or
Oh, DICH, okay.
Benchmark assessment screeners. And there is a lot of data there. And so we do a not small amount of training with teachers to help them to look at the data, make database decisions, choose the right interventions for their students. That is one of the pieces. And then, of course, there's a lot of data that comes out of classroom assessments and, and, you know, teachers' best judgment too. But the, the, we make the most database decisions off of FastBridge, which includes not only the benchmarking that happens three times a year, but in addition, progress monitoring in reading and math.
FastBridge only K through five or K through eight?
Eight, currently.
Oh, K through eight, okay.
Okay, our third goal area is achievement gap. We have an achievement gap reading goal and an achievement gap math goal. In reading, we want to see by 2025 that 63.8% of our students will be proficient in reading, with no student group lower than D8.8. You can see again what the annual targets were for each of our student groups. You can see by the chart where each of our student groups fared. And you can see that we met with, our American Indian students met the goal. Our Asian students and our Hispanic or Latino students met in reading. We have a similar goal in math. Our targets are a little different. By 24, 25, we want to see 59.1% of our students proficient in math, with no student group lower than 54.1%. Again, the targets are on the, within the table. You can see where our students fared by student group in the area of math. Our student groups that met the goal are for Asian students and our Hispanic or Latino students.
This is all grade levels, correct?
All tested grade levels.
So you'll note again that the strategies for these two areas are aligned to our strategic plan. And any strategy with an asterisk is a result of the direct feedback we, we received at the community feedback event. You, I hope you'll appreciate the intentional alignment of our district initiatives to our strategic plan. And then the focus this year is really making sure that we're targeted in what we're doing. And so you'll see that the PBIS is now district-wide and, and that's not new to you. We celebrated that this year, that we were gonna be able to take PBIS district-wide. We received some training on that yesterday as well. You've heard about PLCs and so teachers working with the PLCs. Again, that's one of our district strategies this year to support student achievement. And then finally, the last bullet talks about what we do in the PLCs, what we actually do. And you might have heard it commonly referred to as teacher clarity. But really, it's about teachers really drilling down on identifying the skills and the concepts, mapping it, the learning progressions, communicating the learning intentions. What are you gonna be doing today in the classroom? And then how will we know if you got it while you were there? That's the work of the teacher clarity. And so that is all going to support every student through our, under our achievement gap strategies. Under advancing equity, you'll see that we continue to work on our implementation with our languages at Lowell Elementary. And in fact, through the feedback we received, it has been expanded to include Lake Park Middle School. ESY is a special education summer school program. We added some extra time to that last year. You'll see an expanded check and connect, including the integration specialists and the American Indian homeschool liaisons in that work. And the work of the Instructional Leadership Academy through the Center of Educational Leadership. That involves training for all principals and district administrators. In fact, we're doing that tomorrow and Thursday as well. And so those are the strategies under advancing equity. If we look at improving systems, we have implemented a new data system. And I think most of our district staff has been trained now, the majority of them, on our new tool. And then we also recently hired a family community engagement specialist to focus on our work with engaging families and connecting them to the resources. Those are our strategies to support student achievement and reading and math.
Question?
Member Lark, okay.
Under advancing equity, how many American Indian homeschool liaisons do we have? I see there's a star next to that.
I feel like there's six. I feel like that question is, and there's six.
There's six.
Can you explain what that means though? What does, what does it mean that we expanded our check and connect to include our interventionists and our American Indian home liaisons? That they work within our, I, I know check and connect, we have been able to celebrate a lot of that. So now they're included in that kind of wide umbrella and work with some of the same kids that go to check and connect? No, different ones?
So we have 15 dedicated mentors through our partnership with St. Louis County. We have one mentor per grade level at each of our secondary schools. And we also have one at ALC. To expand it, we've also provided the same training for all of our integration specialists and all of our American Indian homeschool liaison, so we can reach more students. Okay, college and career readiness. We ready? So this is our fourth goal area, and this is a new one. Previously, you know, we've struggled at the district in defining college and career readiness. We've, you know, we don't have a really good measure or haven't historically had a really good measure. We've, we've used ACT scores as a goal area, but that really doesn't encompass all students. That's really not college and career. So after a lot of discussion last year, we came up with the idea of just ensuring that students by the end of their ninth grade year, 90% of them will have used the career exploration tools that are in the MCIS system so that they can develop a personal learning plan that is individualized based on their own needs, their interests, their skills, and the career goals that they have for themselves. So really, it's really about providing some tools and education for students that are more individualized for them and making sure that we're doing that, we're providing those opportunities for them. And we, so we have that goal of 90%. We're just starting in the data collection and implementing that, ensuring that that happens. And last year, 73% of our students had a plan on file. I believe next year, we're on target for about 90% to be met.
Member Sando, do we give our students an opportunity to revisit that? You know, maybe after their sophomore year or their junior year? I mean, I mean, I know it gets late in, in the planning process for them, but you know, how many students are really, have figured it out? You know, that that's what they want to do after their ninth grade year? Any one of us in this room, I mean, did we have it figured out ever in school?
We still don't.
I would love if Danette would have been able to be here tonight, but she is going to be a new grandma. So she had to make her way to Ohio. And so I know she was really excited about coming and talking about the work that she is doing. But that is one of the things in her role, is that she is overseeing CTE. She's overseeing college and career readiness. But she's also overseeing the work of the counselors. And that's one of the things that she's trying to reestablish and align, is the work that those counselors are doing. So yep, we have to have those plans in place by ninth grade. But how are we following through when we're continuing through their journey of high school and getting them to be able to reassess where they're at? And so she's got plans. She's, she's gonna do a wonderful job in her new role. But I do know that that is something that she's working on. It's like, when, when are there times to stop and revisit things with them? So, yeah, she's working on that.
Member Lark, okay.
Kind of a follow-up question, and I am sure that Danette will continue to do excellent work with our career, college and career readiness. Was there conversation or feedback about as we're providing more supports and, and opportunities for students, that we're also doing that with families to help them better understand both what we offer as well as what's out there? Particularly, you know, as a first-generation college student, I didn't, I didn't get much guidance. So I really did rely on my school. And so was that part of the discussion in terms of strategies? Is, how do we?
I don't know that that was a conversation yet as part of, as part of that. You know, we, we, we've had some conversations around now that we have a family and community engagement specialist, which is a new hire for us. How do we start to use that position to be able to do more of these things? But we're, we're at baby stages yet. And so I think that that planning still needs to be more fully developed as we move forward.
And I know our, our career centers, you know, work to do a lot of great work at both our high schools, but.
So I'll get into the strategies then for college and career readiness. And again, you just, you just mentioned some of our career center stuff, and we'll see some of that poll here. But we have also partnered with the Duluth Workforce Center. I know that Danette is attending a lot of workforce center meetings and is in a lot of subgroups. So just really trying to ensure that we have that partnership really strong there. But that workforce center is helping to give us a career counselor and helping our students then who are most at risk of exploring some of these career opportunities. So that's part of that partnership that we have with them. Another thing is that we are continuing to expand career technical education offerings for our students in ninth through 10th, 12th grade. This is one where I felt like the committee, the robust workforce committee, really wanted like, like, we need to do more, you know, like, like, oh, the desire is there for us to be able to do more to provide for our students. And so this year, Danette is really laying some groundwork for pathways. And that's what we call them, our pathways into, into careers. And we've worked, I know that last year, we were working really closely with LSC, who's also doing some pathway work. So just trying to make sure that our pathways are really laid out. She works really hard at the Lake Superior Consortium. And so we're identifying what pathways we have currently, where we can grow with our pathways. And you'll see some things coming out in the future. You know, we want to expand into some law enforcement or emergency response. You know, it's just different things that kids are maybe interested in. We've talked about cosmetology maybe being a potential thing at some of our schools. So there are things that are in the works and, but we're, we're really trying to lay down the pathways first and then be able to expand upon them. So that's the work that she's really laying out this year. We do offer in this area some experiential opportunities for our students that are preparing. I don't know if any of you have ever gone to Construct Tomorrow. It's kind of amazing. But that, that's like one of our things that we do for kids. We have groups that come in and do career fairs. We've got some of these opportunities where we send kids out to these experiences, like the tour of manufacturing. They get to go to different sites and see actually, you know, participating manufacturing companies. And so there's a lot of things that we're trying to do to give students some of those experiences and give them that hands-on opportunity to really get a feel for maybe some of the things that they want to do. Under the, oh, still more supporting every student. I thought we were going to the next category again, but we're not. We still have the career centers and we've done some changing of their FTE. So I think it's a little bit more consistent now at each of the sites. They work closely with the, of the principal of college and career readiness, which is Danette. She was not actually listed in any of our plans when brought to the workforce. So I think this is one that should have had an asterisk because we're like, oh, we didn't even tell the community that we have a person now. So like, that was one of the things that we made sure got encompassed into our planning here for that. That she's, she's helping them do that. And then she's also working with those counseling departments to, to, to coordinate some of these activities and the things that are happening for our stu, with our students. We do have opportunities for students to earn concurrent college credit through our college in the schools program. I had wonderful conversations, Dale and I both had wonderful conversations. Recently, we went to Denfeld and we went to East to really talk about what they desire in some of their advanced, advanced courses and what that could look like. And I know that CITS is, is very desirable for students, especially those who want to stay in Minnesota. Some of the advanced placement classes are very desirable for students who maybe want to move on to maybe some different locations, it sounded like to us today. So, but those advanced placement courses are also things that we have for our students. We also have that bilingual sales program, which was a new addition a couple of years ago. Like during COVID, we were trying to figure out how to do that, but we, we did make it work. And so I know our students are now able to get college credit through that program with their language proficiency, and that's honored in a lot of different places. So improving systems, and this is where, you know, we should have had an asterisk. We did hire Danette on, on that principal on special assignment to, to do that work and to lay this groundwork of expanding our CTE offerings, growing those current programs. So we had gone through a revision cycle with our, our CTE programs and have had to add a few things. Like, there's like another class that needed to go to aerospace physics in order to make it a real, to make it a real pathway. And so she's been really aligning that and making sure that our plans are in alignment. She's been able to really lead different teams through, like our counseling team, through this, the college and career exploration. We've had conversations started around some of the things to make it K-12 versus just nine through 12 or middle school. You know, we're, we're really talking about like what, what system our MCIS system really is kind of limiting. And is there a different program that we can even have some kindergarten students like begin exploration and build upon that as we go through the system? And so those are all conversations we're having. We're not there yet with any real plans, but she's exploring all of the options and looking at what different, what different schools around the state are doing, even schools around the country and what they're doing and offering. We've done a lot of work in, and trying to align with our ALC and AEO just to ensure that we have some different pathways that are also embedded there, like aerospace programming potentially could be really focusing in at AEO. But then also some differently, can we expand? We have the new build of DNT to maybe have a foods program at, at that site. So she's really laying the groundwork right now for us to have some opportunities for different kids in their different places. Yes, Mr. Sando?
Thank you. And, and, yeah, that, that really paints a pretty good picture of all this. I, I guess I just would add, changing the middle school day and adding exploratory as part of improving systems and or, you know, giving that opportunity for those students in our middle schools. And I don't know if we're gonna do it at other grade levels too or not. But, but again, it's, it gets them starting to see opportunities or other ideas of career out there and or have some experiences with that.
Absolutely. Working on that middle school schedule still.
Yes, we're still working on that, but yes.
And then also getting excited to work on the high school schedule.
I'm getting so excited. All right, and our fifth and final goal is graduation. By the year 2025, our four-year graduation rate will be at 90%, with no student group lower than 85%. The groups that met their annual targets and are on track for that would be our Asian students, our Hispanic or Latino students, and our white students.
All right, some of our strategies for graduation. One of the things, you know, Escher funds has given us a lot more flexibility to do some different things creatively, I guess I would say. And we've been trying to, to have more support at the secondary level to get our students across that finish line. One of them gratefully, when we had our initial influx of Escher dollars, was that we did spend money on getting an additional school counselor at the secondary level. So we went from like two school counselors at, or D East to three. So there's really one counselor for each grade level. It is so appreciated just the sheer number and volume of students that we have at some of our sites. We've added counselors to all of our school sites at the secondary level. And, and that's been really helpful for trying to make sure that kids are on track. They're one of, they're one of the key, the key strategies that we have. It's having a school counselor who can really connect and check in with kids and help them, help keep them moving forward. The additional FTE that we have added is so we, we started to identify students that were at risk of, of not graduating. Like, they're close, but they're a little bit deficient maybe in some of their credits. And so this is another And so this is another checking and connecting. It's not check and connect, but it's a checking in with students and connecting with students strategy. We have hired some additional FTE as far as a counselor at East who's helping in like juniors and seniors just to get them, like, how are we going to get here? Can we push you towards credit recovery? Like, just getting what they need there. At Denfeld, it has been another teacher, like as a teacher FTE. And so it becomes like a class time where they're, they're working on things, trying to get them to recover their credits. So it's more of a credit recovery piece and component for our juniors and our seniors. Just wanting to ensure that we're getting them the support that they need to get over the finish line. Looking at the advancing equity piece, our mentors that we have, which is, is there a check and connect mentors? We don't have the words check and connect specifically in here, but this is what this is. So our mentors that we're providing to our students in grades six through 12, who are at risk of dropping out of school based on attendance, grades, and behaviors. We have shifted our focus to trying to make sure, trying to ensure that our kids that are most at risk are receiving these services. So our goal is to have 80% of students that are being supported through check and connect will be students of color and/or receiving special education students. And so that's our overall goal in the district. And I know we just had an update from Sarah. We're not quite at 80% yet, but I felt like we were like 60. Like, we've made significant gains is what we've done in increasing the number of students that are either of color or are receiving and/or receiving special education services. So they're at least talking about all of those kids and seeing if it's a fit for them as they're pulling data. We continue to use the school within school model in core classes for grades six through 10. And that's helping support those students that could use a little bit of a different setting. So it's usually small in class sizes, and it's the same class, but it's maybe at a different pace or a different, different level of, not rigor, but different level of, I don't know what to say, like, different pace, maybe scaffolded more. That's what I'm trying to come up with. Yes, instructional strategy, a little bit different, so it's more scaffolded for them. We do have alternatives to suspension programs that are being utilized at several different sites. We've had increased funds for that. Again, due to ESTER funding, we've been able to put some alternatives to suspension programs into place. Denfeld is one location where we have that. We also have a personnel that is working on some of those alternatives to suspensions at Ordean East. I think East High School is the one school where we don't have any type of programming, but we have it in most of our other programs. And then this is a huge one that it was so good to hear in, I think, at the World's Best Workforce. Then that's why it's added on here. There are families that were really commending the district for reducing that self-transportation boundary from two miles down to one mile because it has really significantly helped families. And we heard those voices come out during those sessions about how it's helping them get their kids to school because they have consistent transportation now. And so I know that that was something that Assistant Superintendent Bonds really spearheaded, and we were hearing that come home. So, you know, that was something that they would like to commend the school district on making that decision. And then the last thing, our systems. Again, that data, that data system for us to be able to quickly identify students in need of support. And so being able to tap into data, I think, has been a big game changer for us. We talk about using different data systems, but we're really getting a more comprehensive system where we can really put all of them together and be able to have access to all that information in one spot. And I saw it on somewhere, I'm sorry.
I had a question just about the increase of access to district buses. Were we seeing then an increase of students particularly in the middle school and the high school? Because that's came up with other activities, things like that, riding buses.
Has ridership increased?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, more than we thought. Which is a good thing. That means, yeah, again, kids and families are taking advantage of the opportunity, and we are getting kids who, on cold days or rainy days, would decide to stay at home instead. Now they're getting on the bus, so we're happy about that. And we have, oh, you about to, I'll let you break the.
No, you, you, you should. You, you changed the, you're the.
And I guess just to give you a little heads up, and it's something else we're working on with the Transit Authority. We have been in communication with them to start a pilot, and we are anticipating the start of a pilot that will occur in January, where our high school students will have access to the, our Transit Authority, so our local bus company. So they will have access to, you know, ridership even after hours, even on the weekends, where they, you know, we heard a lot of clear that families and students really need those opportunities. So we believe that's going to also make an impact or have an impact on student attendance. And obviously, just when you think about equity, just really giving kids an opportunity to go to work and.
Will you, will they just be able to use their school ID? Or do we have to start with a new card, some kind of system that DTA gives us?
Thankfully, we've been able to come to an agreement that as a pilot, the bus drivers will simply keep count. So right now, they won't, they just have to show their ID badge.
Sure.
But next year, the plan is to potentially have it be something that will be barcoded and students will scan. But right now, we're just starting it. So we're just happy that there's agreement with the city to, I mean, with the Transit Authority to do this. And we are, again, we're, I don't want to say we're premature, but I think it's going to happen. And we're really confident that it's going to happen, like 95% sure it's going to happen.
We had it at one time, so that would be great.
And we know we have to do a lot of community, we're starting it that late because we have to do a lot of communication with families and students. We're going to have some time to make sure students learn how to ride the bus, those who have not done so. And we want to make sure that they understand that our student handbook applies even when they are on their way to, on the bus and on the way to school or home. And just think about students now who can stay after for athletics, athletics and activities and enrichment opportunities. I think it's going to be a great thing for our high schools. Remember, Sam?
Just thank the DTA if they follow through on that, because yes, we did have that before. And unfortunately, you know, we lost that for whatever reason. And so, yeah, I think that's huge for all students across the district to have that opportunity. I'm pretty sure that the DTA has had arrangement with the college students in the.
They still have that.
They still have it.
Yeah, this is great news.
Is this high school nine through 12? Or is that what they're defining, high school, nine through 12?
Nine through 12, as a pilot. And then we'll see again what the ridership looks like and try to start collecting some data on that. We believe this also, last thing, because I know we are on time schedule, kind of, is may reduce ridership in our, for our district transportation, releasing stress in our own district transportation system. So we don't know that yet, but we anticipate it might reduce ridership using our own district transportation, which would then reduce the pressure that exists with the need for bus drivers and routes and so forth. So to be determined. So we have to see how this plays out and, and just the financial impact and hopefully some balancing and offsetting of things. So more information to come on that. Remember, Sodowsky?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, very pleased about the buses, so I'll continue to hope that that works. So I just wanted to kind of take it back to, to this presentation and specifically the focus on data. I think just, I really appreciate the update on check and connect. I remember hearing about that. It was because of data that we learned maybe it wasn't being utilized the way that we originally intended it to be utilized. So maybe we weren't hitting, serving certain demographics that we wanted to serve. And so I just think, I appreciate the update on that. And I think it shows to the importance of tracking data to make sure that we're serving our kids the best ways. So, thanks.
So additional feedback and future considerations. So I think throughout this presentation, like we said, all those things with asterisks were the things we took from that advisory group and we incorporated now back into the World's Best Workforce because either they were missing, they weren't clear enough, they wanted other things emphasized that might not have been completely pointed out in the World's Best Workforce. So really, a lot of good information came from that. A couple of these things, so tracking students that we have in Duluth preschool through graduation. So a question came up, like, do you do that? We're like, uh, yeah, no. So we're going to try to think of a way that we can do that. And we're thinking through EduClima, we might be able to do that in a more productive way to track those kids. So we'll see. Providing training for parents on how to educate their kids at home, especially in reading. Dale and I and Heidi, we actually all were in the ReBlow by Third Grade cohort when people came through. Every single group talked about parents and how we could involve parents more in actively reading and knowing how to incorporate literacy strategies at home. And so we were like, oh, yeah, okay, we need more of that. And then developing partnerships and programming better support for teen parents. We were, we had a great discussion at TLE about that. And then we do a lot of qualitative, I mean, quantitative data. I'm sorry, I forgot my done mix up. But that qualitative data piece is sometimes missing from how we report things out. We did a lot of that with our desired daily experiences, how we came up with that. We did all those focus groups. I know Jen and Dale are currently doing a lot of student focus groups, but just continuing to develop our capacity to gather more information like that. So our next steps as far as what needs to happen here with our World's Best Workforce. So our final report and our communication results to the community, and part of that is happening now. When we are done here, I know that Adele is planning on hosting our World's Best Workforce plan, which is one of the links that you have in your board book, your board book. So making sure that we have that report up on our website. That's going to be happening after this meeting today. We are implementing, we are in the process of implementing, but also monitoring the plan, like making sure that we're monitoring these components as we go through the school year. We also want to brainstorm ways to continue to collaborate with the community in meaningful ways. So like, we pulled together a World's Best Workforce Committee to review this. But I know that we've had continued conversations around the desire to have more of a district advisory committee, somebody that can help when you want to talk about referendums or school boundaries or World's Best Workforce or different plans that come forward. And so like, how do we continue to do this collaboration and have maybe a comprehensive group that we could tap into for when we want to have those conversations? And then we want to just make sure that we're continuing that when we're looking at our World's Best Workforce goals and our strategies that we're doing, that we're also making sure that it's aligned with our strategic plan as we move forward.
And then the last slide, there are just links to the supporting plans and the supporting data behind our World's Best Workforce plan. So you can see the achievement and integration plan for the next three years. You also can see the data submission that I need to do the MDE every year. So it has our most recent data report for World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration. Also, we're reading Well by Great Free. We have our plan under as well as the data submission I do annually, so our submission is there. The plan itself, so you just heard kind of a high-level overview of the World's Best Workforce plan, but the detailed plan is linked there. And again, that will be on the website as well as data tables that correspond to the data that we shared tonight. So more of a historical look at those same data points and also just how we've done in comparison to this stage. So you have that for reference as well.
Any additional questions? I just remember, I remember.
Just going back to our next steps and that brainstorming and ways to get and engage advisory committees. Are we, are we hoping that that advisory committees are mostly parents and community members?
Yes, that's correct.
And will we look for the support of our new hire? Or is that out of that job preview, purview? Or is that kind of an intention of our new community engagement employee?
Not as a primary effort, I mean, but that person will be involved in making those connections and make sure that the community and especially marginalized community members are aware of the opportunities and make sure that we tap them to include. What I was proud of is if those who were able to attend and participate in advisor committee, it really reflected the demographics that exist in our community. And so I was really proud of that effort. And I think there was a number of pictures that were taken that showed that or demonstrated that. So we really, we really were strategic in trying to make sure that we really focused on listening to our community, make sure it reflected the diversity that exists in the community and to actually hear them. And that's what we tried to do, and I want to thank the team for doing that, is making sure that as we presented the initial information to the committee, we listened. And then as you, as they shared throughout the presentation, where you see an asterisk, those are additional things that came out of recommendations from the committee members. So we want to make sure that when we bring the community together and they provide information, that they see that we are taking that information to heart and that they end up seeing some of that, some of those recommendations in the planning moving forward. So I'm really proud of that. And this is, this is one of those other efforts, if you think about the strategic planning process. At the end of the day, we use the students, families, and staff's desired daily experiences to help draft and solidify our strategic plan. We did the same thing in this process, trying to make sure that we include and incorporate the communities and families' input into our final district plan. And that's what the World's Best Workforce plan is. It is our communication to the community, again, on how we plan on improving outcomes for our kids.
I applaud you and continue to work to keep achieving that. I don't know if you need to send those advisory people thank you notes or, I don't know, connect or it's an email or something. You know, our community is asking for that. They're always skeptical. They always think that there's not enough parent or community voice. And we continue to work hard. I think, I think if you feel really great about your advisory committee on this project, you know, that's, that's really great work. And we just have to continue to even reach beyond that. So this group can't then be the ones that we keep going back to all the time either. You have to find, you know, new, maybe you ask them to refer a friend. At the end of an advisory committee, you know, maybe there's a survey that they take too that they could then, you know, give us maybe a sixth degree of separation, someone that they could think would be a great addition as well. But it's really important to get our advisory, to get our voices. So thank you.
Thank you. Remember.
I agree. Thank you for all the work on this. This is really a great report after hearing it every year for, you know, I always have appreciated the thought behind the World's Best Workforce that went into reporting back to the community when it was established. But I did have a further question with the advisory committee. You had mentioned that there were a couple members from every, or parents from each school that were either asked to attend. Is, was that true? It was like every school across the district represented?
Every school across the district, I would say, is invited, and we asked the principals to seek someone to send. We have not gone through, like, I know that Alyssa had done some collecting of attendance. She's, I'm not sure if everybody happened to come or not, but the invitation was extended.
I just kind of know in the past that that's been an important piece of having good representation, you know, from Lakewood all the way to Stowe and everything in between. And so I just wanted to follow up on that.
I'm not sure who else was there. Oh, sorry.
I was just going to add that, you know, we had students there. We had a lot of members of EAC there, so community members. I know there was a lot of staff there, which was really great to see. So just wanted to throw that in there. And then maybe just an idea, I, you know, we could share it with Neat, and he could share the, share this with the asterisk sisters to the next EAC meeting.
Yep, that's the plan. And the plan's also to have Adele doing an additional. And the plan's also to have Adele doing an additional follow-up communication to the advisory, whether it's a form of a letter or just things in the superintendent's newsletter. So we're gonna, we are going to do that. Superintendent Agnes?
Sure, I'd like to say thanks to the team. I think that we are getting a little better each time we do this. I think it's kind of many of the things we've worked on, whether it's concurrents, non-concurrents or travel consultation or World's Best Workforce, I think we're embracing with greater depth. And I think that's important. I also think that we, we need to make sure that the data we see is still creating a sense of urgency within us as an organization. And I think we also need to know, because there are gaps that need to be closed. And I also think that it needs to fortify our resolve when it comes to sometimes making tough decisions and trying to do more as an organization. I know it's hard because everybody feels like their plates are overflowing and too full and we can't do one more thing. And at the same time, we have to figure out what, how, how do we continue to close these gaps? And so sometimes it's, it's working with the board and doing fewer things well. I like that we're looking at it through the lens of the strategic plan of supporting every student, advancing equity and improving systems. So I think the more we continue that work of creating greater coherence to focus on what we need to, the better off we'll be. I'm very appreciative.
Appreciate you all being here tonight. And again, it's just a really, for me, it's just so imperative that we, we have really strong leaders as I look at all of you. And we have created an organization that has leadership to carry out all of this in the World's Best Workforce. I'm not always sure that was true in our district. So thanks for your hard work and your leadership and key in curriculum. Just, it's all revolving in our, in our district, so thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, too. And thank you to the ones who are not here, who are not able to.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of others who, from the teacher learning equity team, who have a role and have leadership programming to support this work. They were not able to attend, but they work in a role in the development of the plans and they are charged with leading their teams forward with executing these things. So I wanna thank them, even though they're not here.
Great.
So as we transition, we have individuals who would join us from.
M and Ms, that's it.
I guess we're gonna take a quick stretch here as you guys, as we set up.
You guys probably need to stand up.
Next up will be the Duluth Community School Collaborative, the Duluth Community School Collaborative presentation. Doing some water. All right. We're going to go ahead and get started because I know there's some other commitments that others have, so we're gonna make sure that we provide our presenters here with an opportunity to really have a chance to go deep into their work. So I want to hand over to our leaders from the Duluth Community School Collaborative. If you wanna go ahead and introduce yourself, then.
Just stuck out for a minute. So I'm Angel Nistapaluso. I am the program director for the Duluth Community School Collaborative. And Kelsey Ganser, my counterpart, is the executive director. And we work exclusively, our organization works exclusively with the three Duluth Public Schools that are full-service community schools. That is our, our driving force, that's what we're gonna do. And so we wanted to present a little bit about what we do, but mainly how our community schools are growing from this data-driven focus, similar to what's happening in the district at large. We're working really closely with Mr. Bonds. We're working really closely with our principals and our communities at each of the three schools. We're at Myers Wilkins Elementary, Lincoln Park Middle School and Denfeld High School. The full-service community school model is a national model that is being implemented at those three schools. And it's intended to be transformational, so closing achievement gaps and being really focused on that. And nationally, we've been learning a lot in the past few years about how this model can be more data-driven, can be more tied to academic outcomes. And so we're really excited to share just kind of our, our next level planning that we've been doing with you all.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Kelsey Ganser. I'm the executive director for the Duluth Community School Collaborative. I've been in my position for just about three years. We've been a nonprofit organization since 2001. We're originally the Myers Wilkins, or Grant Community School Collaborative, then Myers Wilkins, then Duluth Community School Collaborative. So yeah, in our presentation, Angel may have shared this too. We'll just give a brief overview of community schools generally. What is that national model? Talk about the strategies we're doing now and then how that ties into a lot of the work that World's Best Workforce just talked about too, which is great. So we did a strategic planning process last year and refined our vision and mission. And so our mission is Duluth Community School Collaborative promotes well-being and success for Duluth Public School students and families by co-creating, celebrating and mobilizing for equitable educational experiences. And so this is really just targeted to, you know, we work within the Duluth Public Schools. So I think this relationship is obviously just there to support the work. Obviously, teachers and everyone in the building has their own work that they're focused on, those educational outcomes. But there's so much more time within students and families days and so many additional needs and supports. And so we're looking at how those pieces plug into the educational outcomes. We also updated our, or defined our organizational values through our strategic planning process. And so these have been important to incorporate in all of our plans that we've been working through too. And then our next slide is our team. So most of our team are based in the school buildings. So we have three staff at Myers Wilkins and two staff at Denfeld. At Lincoln Park, the community school coordinator, Rachel, who's listed up there, is an employee of the district, but comes to all of our team meetings and functions in the same role. And that was due to grant funding that happened when that position was created. And we also have Lisa Parks, who's up there, works across the three school sites. And she's our volunteer coordinator that supports volunteer opportunities across our three schools. And so for partners and supporters on this next slide, we don't do this work alone. So even though, you know, we have a mighty team of eight staff, but we also are working with so many other organizations that are coming in to support this work. We have about 80 active volunteers right now. So those are just individuals, whether they're college students, community members, people through other organizations that are coming in and working with students. That's both during the school day, after school, or supporting things like organizing our clothing and food pantry or things like that. And then, of course, our partnership with the district is the most important partnership to make this work happen. And so I just wanted to highlight what that has looked like. The numbers on here are pulled from 2022, just because we're obviously not done with '23 yet. And so in 2022, the Duluth Community School Collaborative, as a nonprofit organization, secured about $500,000 in grants and contributions that went to support the school. We employed eight full-time staff. And then throughout the year, we had additional seasonal staff, summer employees, out-of-school time partners. And then for joint support, we co-wrote several grants with the district. The largest one that we received was through the Minnesota Department of Education. We received a full-service community school grant at Myers Wilkins, and that grant has helped to fund some of the work that's happened there. We also co-wrote a grant with the Office of Education Equity to provide summer programming in 2022. And then from the district side of things, they support the full-service community school coordinator at Lincoln Park. They provide in-kind space for us, or I should say you all provide that. And then we also have contracts with the district that help support our community school coordinators' work. And most of those contracts were funded through those co-written grants that we worked with the district. So that's a little bit just about our relationships and our history. And then next, I'll talk about the four pillars of the full-service community schools. So this is the national model, is based on these four pillars. So there are collaborative leadership practices, active family and community engagement, integrated support services and expanded and enriched time and opportunity. And so I'll go into just briefly some of the things that we're doing within each of those strategies. And then Angel will share how that connects in with some of the broader district goals. So our current family engagement plan, we're looking at a tiered system for that. If you can scroll down for that. So we have, I'll talk more about these on the next slides. But this includes both the family engagement on this slide and then also how we're connecting with students and families and that community engagement. So family involvement is really important to this work. We love this picture. This was a tall, a tall off at one of our events with two very tall dads seeing who was taller. And we, so bringing in that family voice is so essential to the work. I know that came up even in the conversation that you all just had about World's Best Workforce. And so that's central to the work that we're trying to do as well. And so one of the ways that we're doing that is through our leadership, our full-service community school leadership teams at our schools. And so these teams are composed of school staff, families and students and community partners. Coming out of COVID, this was something that we worked really hard to rebuild. We had lost a lot of those relationships with not being able to meet in person. And so that has been a big work to rebuild those. We've tried to make those meetings as accessible as possible. So we've provided meals at them, we've provided childcare, we've picked up families to be able to be there. But it is also a commitment to, to come. So we're getting voices from some families and having those conversations, but we know that not every family is able to be present in that type of capacity. And so some of that led into our next slide, which is on our co-design work. So we're piloting this co-design process this year. And so we're working with five families at each of our community schools and asking them to reach out into their networks, similar to what you had just recommended, and have conversations with five people in their networks. I always feel a little bit like I'm describing a Ponzi scheme in this situation, but really being able to tap into those deep relationships that already exist. So people who are connected with the school and interested in the work and then having conversations with the people in their networks. And so this process has three stages to it. So going out, having those conversations in their community, coming back, sharing that information with school teams, having those school teams ask more questions, refine their questions, going back out and continuing those conversations with families. And so we've partnered with Generations Healthcare Initiatives on this work. And so we're able to pay those family members to come to those school meetings as well as have those conversations in their community and to just provide, you know, a meal and things for families to be able to be there.
And I'll just say what they're working on right now in three schools. Denfeld's continuous improvement team is listening to their, their co-design group. It's all getting kicked off next week with a big training for everyone at all three schools, co-designers and the teams for the schools with, with our kind of expert that we've been working with, the same as Jess Roberts from the University of Minnesota. And so Denfeld is CIT. Lincoln Park is their PBIS team. And the elementary at Myers Wilkins is their attendance team. And mostly attendance is coming up as a big one for all of them. So, and it's, and it's something that hits home for families and that we can really listen to. So we're really excited to hear what those families are gonna say about what's going on, what are some of the root causes and not just, the, the design of the co-design process that Jess brings is that it's not just asking what we should do, because that's a lot of, that's our job to figure out. That's, that's our work to do. But tell us about a time you felt like you belonged somewhere. Tell us about a time that you felt this way and you wanna bring someone somewhere. Your kid wants to show up someplace. So we're really excited about this opportunity and what it's gonna bring for all of our teams at our schools.
I think it will really be a new way to approach that family engagement because we, we've worked with all three of the community schools to reach out to families in additional ways, but you're getting some of the same families over and over again. Or you just get so little information back through surveys and different things and you might wanna know more. Or did we even ask the right questions in the survey? So that's what's nice about this process too. I'll just give a very brief overview of our expanded and enriched learning time opportunities. And so at all three of our community schools, we have out-of-school time programming. So that includes free after-school programming as well as summer programming. The after-school programs, we provide free transportation. I'll give a quick shout out to our, since transportation came up, Soraya, who's at our high school as our community school coordinator, was part of that work with DTA as well and setting up that relationship. And so we're really excited to have that happen. We've been providing bus passes at the high school so students can come to our after-school programming and then ride the public bus home. But we are seeing a much greater need beyond just coming to our program. You know, students were asking, can I get a pass to go to a job? Or can I get a pass because I'm staying across town at my grandparents' house or whatnot? So I think this is really exciting to, for that as well. But we provide other transportation, at the elementary level, they're not riding the public bus. We're providing a bus for them. That's been a challenge with limited transportation. They've been coming from, last year, we were contracting with Schubach Transportation out of Hiving. And this year, we're, we're contracting with Chisholm. So I think the transportation.
Okay, thank you.
And so this, the transportation need is, is still there. And so it's just an additionally exciting thing. So these are just some fun pictures from, we can update some of these too. Some of them I've actually found a little bit old. The, this slide is all of our Howling Hoops program, the second slide from our elementary school. And so that's at Myers Wilkins. The students are, that was our first after-school program that we really restarted coming out of COVID. And so those students were students who were recommended by teachers of, you know, needing some of that additional support and connection and, and team building with their peers. They also did not have access to transportation typically and also did not, were not going to another out-of-school time programming, such as Boys and Girls Club or something else in the community. And so we were excited to be able to come in and provide that for those students who weren't connected to something else already. And then our last pillar here that I'll talk about is our integrated student supports. And so at our schools, we have food pantries at all three of our schools. They look slightly different. So at Myers Wilkins, Second Harvest comes in and provides the backpack program. And so that's meals going home to families. But we've worked with the school to have snacks in the classroom. That was a need that came directly from teachers and parents and students of just having high behaviors when they didn't have enough food during the school day. We also provide personal hygiene items there. And twice a week at the elementary school, we have fresh fruit and fresh vegetable program where students are trying a fresh fruit and vegetable snack. At the middle school, we have a food pantry where students can have snacks or take food home. And same at the high school too. We have the Hunter Hut, which has food, clothing and basic food items. We also have a community health coordinator. We're currently interviewing for that position right now. We just had turnover in that position. But that individual can work directly with students and families to, for example, rides to medical appointments or accessing other community resources. And so that's something that we've worked really closely with, especially the staff at Myers Wilkins, on that, refining that position so that it's supporting what's already happening in the schools, but able to provide some of those supports that are difficult for school staff to be able to step out of their classrooms to take a family to a medical appointment. So that's just a brief overview of our strategies and some of the things that we're doing within those strategies. I know it's a lot, but just trying to give you a broad range. There's more that happens with that, in that, and especially with individual students and families as well. But I'll pass it over. But I'll pass it over to Angel to talk about how those strategies tie into some of the district goals and how we're working, especially this year, to start measuring the impact of those strategies.
Thanks. We can move forward on the slides. And we can move forward on this one too, but we're really looking at data here and what, why we need to have these community schools. We know that our three schools that are community schools in the district need extra support and that the students and families need extra support. And we want to be there to provide it. We could continuously stay busy, but we want to focus in and really hone in on how we can have the best impact. And so this is a small slide. I will happily provide anyone with copies that are larger. But you can see on the left side, yes, and if you're able to zoom, that would be pretty great. Thank you. On the left side there is our district strategic plan goals, the big three. Increase equity in student achievement, every student is supported, and improve systems. And we've got three main goals for all of the things that we're doing at the three schools that our community school coordinators are overseeing. They may not be running them directly, but they're overseeing them and managing the implementation of these strategies that are on the far right. They're color-coded by the goals. And the three big ones are increase equity in student achievement, increase positive school climate, and increase active family and community engagement. Those are our biggest goals and how we're trying to tie everything together. We worked with our district leaders and our school leaders to identify objectives that are measurable and timely and that come from district strategies as well. So the school improvement plans, the A&amp;I Plan, and district-wide implementation goals like PBIS School Climate Survey. So we are measuring increasing attendance, consistent attendance of protected class students at our schools. We're trying to increase that. We're working on graduation rates. Those are from our A&amp;I Plan. Looking at PBIS School Climate Data specifically and what we're trying to do. Oh yeah, these things are all written down in bigger, yeah, they're bigger. Good, good, good. So you can see, you know, what each of them are. Yeah, sorry, going backwards unfortunately. And increasing the family response rate to the School Climate Survey is one of our after-family and community engagement goals, as well as increasing the number of families that are engaged in providing strategy improvement input to those continuous improvement teams. You know, we've got space on our continuous improvement teams at our schools for family members to be part of those teams. But after COVID and everything, at the point where we were doing this this summer, we had one family member that was on the team from all three schools at the moment. But with this co-design process, we will have input from at least fifty families into those teams, which is really exciting. And so if we want to go back to the slide that has the tiny writing, you can just see on the right side all of the actual strategies that we're implementing. So there's a tiered family engagement strategy. All of these strategies are data-driven and come from community voice and student voice. And we've got plans for evaluating each of them as well on an ongoing basis. Co-design, as we mentioned, the Myers Wilkins Community Health Coordination, the Lincoln Park School Pantry, Lincoln Park Restorative Practices, the Denfeld Relevant Life Skills Programming. So that's programming that students are identifying as a need that are bringing partners in for wins. And then our after-school program at Dash Denfeld. And the Basic Needs Program, as we mentioned, out-of-school time at Myers Wilkins. Myers Wilkins Student Leadership Teams is another one of the strategies. And I think that's about it. So we're really trying to narrow down what we're working on, what we're measuring, and trying to make it really clearly measurable and looking at these specific indicators that are linked to those for results. So I'm really excited about it, and if anyone has any questions. I'd love to talk more ever and ever about it.
I'd just like to, I'd like to say thanks for the partnership. I think that when we think about our schools with the greatest needs and the students and families with the greatest needs, having community schools is, it's a vital part of our strategies. It's when we think about even the World's Best Workforce Plan that you just saw, you can see how making sure that the students' basic needs are met and that we're thinking about the whole child and thinking about the families is really important to us as we move forward. And so I can't say enough about the importance of this partnership, as well as the results that we're having and the focus on continuous improvement as well. Thank you.
And I also want to say thank you to Kelsey and Angel for all your efforts. I joined the district four years ago. I know one of the things we've been striving to do is to continue to partner, to continue to make sure that community schools is having an impact and ability. And I really, really appreciate, I'm trying to make sure the board sees this too, that we're trying to braid efforts, because we are doing a lot of things in our district to try to meet the needs of kids and families. And the scores aren't where they should be and where we want them to be. And we're trying to make sure, you know, over the last few years, like how do we braid these efforts? How do we make sure that everyone is really trying to, you know, address the same issues, whether in this case, attendance, or how can a community school or collaborative support that effort, you know, as a district? As you know, we have an attendance campaign that we've been doing for the last month of November. And so I just appreciate the efforts and trying to braid everything and just make sure we are, you know, trying to best for our kids. So thank you.
Yeah, well said, and thank you. It's been really wonderful to see the growth of our community schools for the last years and then how, what our goal was when we worked to get those grants for Lincoln Park and Denfeld to see how you would work together and kind of build on that. So thank you for doing a strategic plan. Again, I remember being involved on a few years back. And then also, I love the co-design teams and the, you know, relationship building, relationship building, relationship building. That's what it's so about, so, wow, thank you. This is kind of just a side question, but the fundraising that you've done, if an individual, because I know this is separate than the school district, so if an individual or an organization wants to contribute, how do they go about that?
Yeah, so we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so kind of your standard nonprofit organization. So we can accept donations, they're tax-deductible donations. And we are eligible then to apply for most grant funding too, which makes the partnership with the district also really beneficial in ways that there, sometimes we have opportunities to apply for funding that the district or an individual school otherwise would not without that nonprofit status designation. So that's also, and then on the flip side, there's things like districts or school sites can apply for that we can't, or we have to apply in partnership. So it's a good, that side of it's really beneficial.
Excellent, thank you so much just for all the different ways you're working and you've really grown the work of the community schools. I wish every school could have a community school, right?
That's what I think. I think when we talk to the community about it, that's usually the number-one question that I probably receive is like, well, why are you only in those three schools? And obviously, capacity is a piece of it. You know, and identifying need and the decision to have that flow of services for students from elementary all the way through high school. But certainly, we know that those, every student and every family deserves to have their whole needs addressed and whole person addressed. So it's, we'd love to be in every school, and I do think that every student can benefit from community schools.
Oh, there was, uh, Members of Alskin and Members of Sandholm.
Okay. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I really appreciate everything that you do, and I hear that too, I am in all the schools, but appreciate the work that you're doing. I really love that you have tied it up to the district goals too, just to kind of show how we are being cohesive together and that you have measurable strategies. You don't need to answer this now, I'd be curious to see, you know, how you track those, the method, you don't have to answer that one. But I also really appreciate your really detailed list of community partners here. That's what we need to kind of address some of the bigger issues, I think, that when we look at our reading rates and our graduation rates. And so just, thank you for doing that.
As our board members are leaving, I just want to say thank you to Members Kirby, Sandholm, and Oswald. This is your last committee of the whole meeting, and thanks for your service.
Nice.
We'll celebrate it more, but I just wanted to say...
End advisory meeting soon, if you want to do the advisory meeting.
No, respect, and then Members Sandholm.
Your side.
I'll just address quickly just the tracking. We're working on that piece of things. We've really tried to tie our tracking into things that are already being tracked. So aligning our questions with things like the School Climate Survey so that we have a baseline for local school, and then we can ask questions for students who are receiving extra services or support and things, so we can do a little bit of compare, contrast with that. And we've been working with the district as well too on pulling that student data and putting it into a separate database so that we can be tracking that. It's been, it's been work for that. We've been in more of an Excel spreadsheet kind of land of tracking things, and so we're working to improve those systems as we grow and really wanting to track individual students from Myers Wilkins all the way through graduation. Thank you.
Members Sandholm?
I just want to say thank you too. And this is Superintendent Bonds, the way you expressed it too, that Member Lofford kept explaining too, I was well set, because it does weave so much together. And, you know, I was thinking the same thing. And in another analogy or another way to look at it too, it's like you're an important piece of the puzzle. And it's almost like the picture's not complete unless we have community schools. And so I thank you for what you're doing. I'm just, and then the way it's grown over the years, so I... Do you have recollection of the history? I mean, we started community schools here, was it eight years ago, ten years ago?
2001.
2001 with Myers.
Yeah, yes, it's been over twenty years at the elementary level. And then 2015.
It was Lincoln Park that added.
Moved up to Lincoln.
It was, yeah, Planning and Implementation Grants were separate, but Planning around 2015, 16, it was.
So the same group planted in the elementary schools, Myers Wilkins or...
A grant at the time.
Okay.
Yeah, and then became Myers Wilkins. So started in around 1999, was community activism level, and then the Grant Community School Collaborative became a nonprofit in 2001.
It's just great to see how it's grown and how it is so important to get the big picture, to complete the district in what we're trying to accomplish here, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and just a big shout-out to our principals. We couldn't do this without a partnership from principals. And so our three schools have amazing principals that have worked with us very closely. And again, to our superintendents, if we didn't have that partnership, we couldn't do this, or what works.
And I feel blessed that I get to spend, I spend a lot of time at Denfeld After School, so I'm really eyes-on to, you know, the growth and the participation and just the growth in our partners. You know, Denfeld just put out, I think, their calendar for December with what's going on and what days. And, you know, I'm just thrilled to see that it's come back. I know after COVID, we had trouble too with our tutors coming in or our agencies coming to help. But, and I think I see Boys and Girls Club coming in. And, you know, so there's other agencies, you know, going into our high schools as well. And then I think I'm a part of the after-school, I think I'm a part of the community school at Lincoln, I'm doing a club over there with our speech and debate kids. And to see how many teachers give themselves to do clubs after school. And I think that's also true at Denfeld too. And that's exciting. I don't get to see Myers very often, but I do get to see the growth. And I think we could use more space in our pantries and our food. But, you know, I do appreciate the gift that the district has given to open up our doors to community schools, to take, you know, the necessary office space and work that we do so that we can reach all kids is commendable. So, thanks.
Thank you, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our Denfeld today.
So I will ask for a motion, oh, no, we don't need a motion. Never Oswald, if I ever learn that, I think.
Mr. Oswald, thank you for staying with us, because we're still...
Thank you.
Yeah.